Good evening, gentlemen. Thank you for joining us at the, our first meeting of the new year for the Hyde Park Planning Board. Please take note of the exits around the room, and join me as we salute the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. A housekeeping note first. Welcome back, Mr. Murphy. Thank you for signing on for another seven-year term.
And Michael, thank you for signing on as the chairperson.
Thank you. It was interesting to be at the town board reorganization meeting in here that you will not be stepping down until 2021.
Twenty-one, right. Well, I'll probably get renewed again.
We'll hope so. And second, we signed all the contracts, so again, our consultants remain the same. Rodenhausen Schall for attorney, and Morse Associates for engineer. I did instruct the engineer and our planning consultant, there was no need for them to come tonight, and I'll explain why when we get into the first item on the agenda, which is the carriage trail at Town Center, commonly referred to by us as Crofton Mews, its original name. Applicants are seeking site plan extension for a project that was first submitted in 1996 and has been approved since I joined the board in 2006. I'm making a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Riley, you want to come up? Supervisor Riley, I'm sorry.
Mr. Isai.
I want to give you your, no. People who stick their neck out of the line to run for office deserve the credit that it gets. In the interim, we had asked Mr., right. We had asked Mr. Riley to submit something to show us that the wetland delineation, the wetland boundaries had not moved. It appears that they were last certified back in 2004, and we were required by the DEC, or requested by the DEC to have them recertified every six years. Mr. Riley submitted some maps. They're not precisely what we asked for, but they appear to show that the wetlands have not migrated any. But also, in the last resolution that we had approved during the last extension, which was 16-96 EE, in the second whereas clause, resolved clause, we asked for recertification and evidence of DEC approval. That wasn't submitted, but in the interim, I did speak to Michael Rubo, formerly of our CAC, who's, as we know, an ecologist, and he did tell me that it would be better if we really want to make sure that the lines are formed correctly, or that we can get them correctly. This is not the time of year to do it. While a delineator could do it during the winter, it's far easier if you wait till there's spring thaw, so it wouldn't really be possible to get anything done right now to know for real accuracy.
I don't disagree, and that's why I was suggesting that we could make it a condition to the approval that be done by late spring. Having done the mapping project, it wasn't exactly a recertification, but it did delineate the improvements that were done over the years to make sure that they were not inflicting any damage to any of the wetland boundaries, and in fact, that the setbacks were exceeding the required setbacks, and that the wetlands themselves haven't migrated substantially between 2003 and 13. And I think the mapping project did accomplish those aspects. And now, the DEC approval, among all of our approvals, is the only one that's going to expire in 2015, in December, so we were going to have to undertake that anyway. So that was the reason I asked for an approval only till November of 2015, understanding that the board cannot approve something that was beyond the most current of the subsidiary approvals. So that is underway regardless. The reason I was requesting to make it a condition of the approval so that basically the transaction for the new buyer could be completed with an approval in place, and with lawyers at transaction closings like to have clarity. If I, if they know that they have to do 1, 2, and 3 by X, Y, and Z date, they are very happy with that. If they know that the approval is in some kind of stasis, then that, that makes them hard to understand the transaction. So this work has to be undertaken regardless this year. We've been very diligent over the 10-plus years of keeping all of our approvals in place, and most of our approvals now extend between 2016 and 2020. And the DEC work will be done in 2015, in, I think, a timely fashion. And I, I think it's a matter of paperwork, not a, an issue that the board has to worry about, that there is some issue with the wetlands. And I think the mapping project at least proved that.
And just to, I believe, I agree with you. And just to also reassert back into the record that the initial project as approved, the development area of disturbance was pulled away, as you said, from the wetlands that are there, and also, they were beyond the 100-foot adjacent area. We also refer to as buffer. The only thing that would, could have changed would be if somehow the wetlands had really migrated to be so that the adjacent area was then going to be less than 100. That would still be a DEC issue, which you'll have to go back to anyway.
Yeah.
So I personally am comfortable moving forward, particularly the way the resolution is written, but we'll talk about that in a little bit. First, is there anything else you want to add?
No, I think that if there's any other questions in regards to the narrative, I did prepare that in the draft petition, going over the, what is going on this year in terms of the transfer of the property. The new owner should be in place by February 1st. Speaking with Tad Moss and other members of the town professional staff, the new owners are, any owner, including the buyers that are very interested, have been made aware that there'll be work to be done immediately in regards to getting new stormwater plans in place, erosion control in place, and that the, the project will need attention as soon as the weather turns. So I want to assure the town that the, one of the reasons we're trying to get this done now is so that the, the new developer will have time between February and March to get their, their feet wet on the project, so to speak, and, and hit the ground running in spring to not only deal with the DEC wetlands, which is an approval issue, but also the other issues that Ms. Moss was more interested in, which was getting the site back into a controlled state for stormwater.
Right. I do also just state for the record that per your narrative and our own knowledge, the project has not changed since it was last approved.
No.
So that all see, other seeker impacts would remain the same. There is no change to the impact in traffic, et cetera. Everything else has remained the same. You're just seeking an extension. So I was going to say, let me start with the consultant, but instead, let me start to my left. Mr. Signa, any comments?
No, the, so the reason for the delay in, in getting the wetlands properly delineated was because you were waiting until?
There wasn't a reason for delay. It, the, the permit would
Right.
be necessary for December of 2015. So the work was going to be planned for the summer of 2014.
2014, right.
Regardless.
Right.
The question came up only in extending the approvals from November of '14 to November of '15. At what point was the board comfortable making that extension without some preliminary idea of if there's going to be an issue with the wetlands? And so, the mapping project was done to assure the board that we don't feel that there's any physical issue with the wetlands. It's a matter of the paperwork being done, the field studies. They have to go out and stake it, take samples.
Yep.
And, and work with the DEC this summer.
Any other comments?
No, that's all.
Mr. Murphy?
Yeah, I have a, I have no problem with the wetlands issue, but I'm wondering how old this number, about the $676,854.77 bond, I'm wondering, you know, because I've been here a long time, Mr. Riley and I have gotten to know each other. Well, I'm wondering how old that number is.
The number is dated. I did, I thought I copied everybody on the planning board. Maybe I didn't, but I did request Mr. Sotero and Ms. Axelson to take a look at the number. And Mr. Sotero responded, replied by saying, keep it the same.
Okay.
The reason why is there have been some changes in costs. Wages have gone up, but of course, as gas prices have gone down, or fuel prices have gone down, cost of asphalt has reduced. And he said that he thought it looked roughly the same. Plus, he anticipates that with any new owner, there will be some project changes.
There's, I'm sure there'll be modifications sought in terms of minor issues. The, the current approvals, as they are laid out, require that bond to be updated prior to a building permit.
Correct.
Anyway, so I knew at that point that Mr. Sotero would take a look at it. I think it was done in 2012, at which time asphalt prices were at a near peak. So if anything, the town is secure knowing that they
Okay, that's all.
Yep, I know. It's a good question, because I thought about it. That's why I asked him to. That's why I, again, I was going to say, I didn't ask him to be here, because that's the only information that he had to impart, was that he was comfortable with leaving the way it is.
I think he should have come here anyway.
It was updated about five or six times from 2003 to 2012.
Correct.
Okay.
And again, that's right. Asphalt prices were higher because fuel prices were higher at that point. Mr. Reniger?
No additional comments.
Ms. Dexter?
I guess my only question was, in the set of maps here, I could not tell for the life of me what the difference was between page one and page two.
Dates.
Dates. One was '03, and one was '13.
Oh, it was comparison.
Right, it was showing that
You asked to see what the wetlands were at the date of initial approval, which was 2003, and the most recent Google mapping of that site, which was 2013.
You didn't actually ask for that. You asked for recertification of the wetland boundaries.
But he was proposing that this was close enough, right, so. And if you look at the map, you can't really see that there's been much movement. Now, you're really high, but, you know.
Well, but I also don't know exactly when the dates were, that the photos were taken, and
Well, they are listed on the mapping.
Right. And they're both leaf-off, time periods of leaf-off, obviously.
And I apologize, Victoria. I thought, I was responding to what Mr. Sotero's request was at the last meeting, which was not for a recertification, but which was for a narrative with some type of overlay showing the board that the DEC wetlands were still in place.
Right. As per my notes, Mr. Sotero said we want to be cooperative, because, again, I need to stress, and if you have questions, Victoria, she can answer, but so can Mr. Riley. The applicants in this case are constitutionally vested, I believe, because they spent, remember, they, they already installed all the infrastructure.
Oh, yeah, they put all kinds of infrastructure.
Right. So it's, it would not be prudent for, even though other members besides myself may question whether this will ever really happen, it's not really prudent for us to say, we don't see it's going to happen, so we're just going to deny it, because there's no real reason for us to do so. The question is just, do we treat, how do we handle treating the wetlands boundaries that we do everybody else, which is after so many years, we make them recertify. In this case, they're going to have to anyway, because your DEC permit expires, so. Comments, Mr. Oliver?
No, I, I agree with the approach, and thank you for taking the time for the narrative and the, you know, the overlay. And hopefully, the property will change hands, and this spring you'll get the proper tests.
I think there's a, a very optimistic viewpoint on the project, and I understand why there would be hesitancy on anybody's thoughts in whether the project would, would finally get moving. But the cycles of the business world do turn, and we are finally on the top end of the wheel again. So I have, I am cautiously optimistic that someone is going to put enough money into this project to make the next step, and the $11 million invested between 2003 and 2014 will not
Before not. Mr. Rossigliano?
No comments, no questions.
Would anyone from the public like to speak about this application? Mr. Ma, I haven't seen you in a while, by the way. How's everything? Good? Good. There being no other comments from the public. Ms. Pollard, do you have any comments?
My only comment was that, you know, in 2012, we did advise the applicant, he would have to recertify the wetland boundaries before he came back. And of course, it's 2015, and again, we're asking for an extension. So rather than granting the full year that he's requested, I'm, I'm recommending that you limit it, because otherwise, you know, our clauses lose their effectiveness if we don't enforce them.
So we would be, the, the first resolved clause would then say that we are extending it to June 7th, which should give you time to recertify. Do you think that's enough time for you to ask the owners to go through all that, or?
I think it's probably close. I, I don't, I don't disagree with you, Victoria. I think there's been some extenuating circumstances for why this particular approval was put off until, it's not an expired approval. It goes to the end of December 2015. I understand that the board looked at it in 2012 and wanted to recertify it. It should have been probably done this year, but due to the transfer of the property, it was put off. And you understand litigation more than most, I'm sure, so that there was an intervening cause. And I, I think that the approval for what is now a nine-month period does not put the board at any risk, and I think it's a very short period of time for, for a lot of work to be done. I wouldn't want to have to come back in June and say, do we need a week or two weeks? So
Would you, are you requesting that we extend it a little bit further than June 7th?
Yeah, I mean, if you did maybe the July meeting, it would give me a little bit more comfort that if we ran into a harsh winter where they couldn't start their field inspections as quickly as we'd like, that would be more comfortable. If, if you're doing just a shorter approval versus a conditional approval. I was also happy with a conditional approval, where you did the, the one year with 180 days, or 160 days, or whatever condition you would have to submit the recert to keep that approval going.
Which would you prefer?
I just want to point out, first off, that the, the time is retroactive back to November
Right.
when this would have expired.
Right.
So at this point, it really is a five-month extension. Going to July would make it eight months, but really, six months
Six.
to get the work done.
I'm fine with July.
It seems reasonable to me.
July's all right with me.
Ms. Knapp, can you tell me, can you give me the date of the first July meeting, so we can correct the resolution? I'm sorry, I don't have a calendar out. In the meantime, as I said, we'd all want to be cooperative.
July 1st?
And, July, is it really? Thank you, Mr. Signa. July 1st.
So we can keep it to July 7th?
July 1st.
That will give them, then it's a full month.
You're right. We'll do July 7th. That means you would, you would have to notify us before July 7th.
So it's changing.
Right.
It's going to July 7th on the resolution?
Right.
Mm-hmm. And changing the title to say eight months.
Eight months.
As we had to say, eight.
Okay. Anybody else have any other discussion? I'm making a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. And who has this file?
I do.
Oh.
Resolution to grant an eight-month extension of time to complete construction carriage trail at Town Center. Resolution 16-96 F?
F.
Whereas, 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 whereas. Now therefore be it resolved, that pursuant to Section 108-9.6A of the code, the planning board hereby grants an eight-month extension of the time in which the applicant must complete construction to, and including July 7th, 2015. And be it further resolved, that any future request for an extension of the time in which to complete the conditions of approval shall include recertification of the wetland boundaries and evidence of DEC approval of the delineation. And be it further resolved, that if and when agreement with Dutchess County Water and Wastewater Authority is reached relating to the water line, all legal agreements and/or documents created in connection with the agreement shall be submitted to the town attorney and planning board attorney for approval. And be it further resolved, that before a building permit may be issued for any improvements on the property, the applicant shall submit a letter of credit or other equivalent security in the amount of $676,854.77, as required by Resolution 16-96 CC, and again, in Resolution 16-96 EE, subject to review by the town attorney as to form, sufficiency, and manner of execution. And be it further resolved, that before a building permit may be issued for any improvements on the property, the applicant shall repair and reinstall all Blanding's turtle mitigation measures. And be it further resolved, that no building permit shall be issued until the applicant has submitted an updated SWIP to the town, which is acceptable to the planning board engineer and stormwater management officer, and has applied for a local stormwater permit. And be it further resolved, that no certificate of occupancy for the last completed structure on the site shall be issued until an as-built survey has been submitted to the zoning administrator.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. And, Mr. Riley, will you, do you think you'll be still involved with this application once the sale is made?
That is a good possibility.
Good. We look forward to working, we look forward to working with you in the future. It's been a pleasure all this time.
Thank you very much. I appreciate all of your patience and understanding.
Absolutely, and I hope not. Have a safe drive back. The next, the next item on the agenda is a sign permit recommendation for Riverside Auto Park. We have the recommendation from Ms. Moss. Everyone had a chance to review this proposed signage?
They have.
It is code compliant. Who has this file?
I do. Resolution recommendation for issuance of sign permit pursuant to Town Code Section 108-24.3A, Sub 4, Sub D, Riverside Auto Park, January 7th, 2015, Resolution 14-48A. Whereas, whereas, be it therefore resolved, the board hereby recommends the sign permit be issued within 10 days of this site being brought into compliance with the approved site plan and provisions of the zoning code. Be it further resolved, that if the sign permit cannot be issued within 90 days, that this recommendation expires, and a new sign permit application will be required, along with a new application fee, before another recommendation will be considered.
Second.
Any discussion?
The only question I have, there was a question as to the location of that sign in an agenda meeting, and has that been clarified?
Ms. Moss said it was clarified that it is in the right location. Yep.
Okay.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Now, this was for the, the freestanding sign. We also have a separate resolution for the wall sign. Do you have that one too?
I do. Again, January 7th, 2015, Resolution 14-48. Whereas, whereas, be it resolved, the board hereby recommends the sign permit be issued for the wall sign within 10 days of the recommendation as specified in the code. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is that under the same conditions as the other one, because you still have the same
It's a slightly different condition. This has to be up by 10 days. I might add, the sign's already up, so.
Right.
But it's just a little bit, it's, it's under a different section of code, too. That's why we did them separately.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
The motion carries. The next item on the agenda is a new sign for a new business, Candy Nail and Spa. Would you be the Candy Nail and Spa people?
Yeah.
Okay. Just curious. This is a business that's going into Rockledge Plaza, the recently renovated, recently renovated plaza on 9G. This and another business will make, make it certain that they both, that the entire plaza is filled now. The sign resembles all the signage that was designed for the site and is going into a location previously approved by the board. So we have the recommendation by the zoning administrator. Who has this file?
I do.
Thank you.
Resolution number 14-55. Whereas, 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 now therefore be resolved, that the planning board finds that the proposed tenant sign exhibits design unity in shape, colors, utilized, and fonts, and therefore recommends issuance of a sign permit by the zoning administrator for the wall sign for Candy Nail and Spa as proposed.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries. The next item on the agenda is Alterniverse. Would you be the Alterniverse folks? No? Okay. Sorry. This is, will be the final, the final space in Rockledge Plaza that's been taken. The business is to sell comics, toys, and cards, collectible cards, I guess. And I just want to take a moment to say, these are, these small spaces are hard to rent, and these are the kinds of businesses that are perfect for small strip centers like this.
Yeah.
So I wish them luck. Again, the sign comports in the same way that the other sign does. So who has this file?
I do.
Thank you.
Resolution number 14-56. Whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved, that the planning board finds that the proposed tenant sign exhibits design unity in shape, colors utilized, and fonts, and therefore recommends issuance of a sign permit by the zoning administrator for the wall sign, alternative comics, cards, toys, as proposed.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's Ed.
And the last item, or excuse me, penultimate item on the agenda is Hudson Valley Federal Credit Union. Applicants are seeking permit, permission to erect a wall sign and a new tenant panel sign, in the directory sign for Hyde Park Mall. Basically, this is a change in logo, and a change in font style. I don't know if you all had a chance to see that the tenant panel, it's actually even harder to read. But the other one isn't really that easy to read either, so, and I guess they'll be consistent this way. Otherwise, they're both code compliant. And so who has this file?
I do.
Resolution recommendation for issuance of sign permits pursuant to Town Code Section 108-24.3A for D, Hyde Park Mall, tenant wall sign for Hudson Valley Federal Credit Union, Resolution number 14-57. Whereas, 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 whereas. Now therefore be it resolved, that the board makes the following findings with respect to the request of wall sign. One, the additional size of the letters is appropriate, given the signs date, signs distance from the road. Two, the increase in size is appropriate due to the size of the building upon which the wall sign is being placed. Three, the size is consistent with and similar to other nearby tenant wall signage. Be it further resolved, that the board hereby grants the applicant the requested sign bonus permit, a maximum symbol size of 24 inches, and a maximum letter height of 16 inches, as shown on the plan, and recommends sign permit be issued within 10 days of this recommendation as specified in the code.
Second.
All in favor?
Can I, I have one question on that first.
Yes, sorry.
This is a Victoria question, and I did not get a chance, I didn't see this till late this afternoon. They say that the height change to allow us to grant all the way up to 24 inches is based on being something like 900 foot from the entrance way, not from the actual Route 9. If you go from Route 9 and you look over, it's really much closer. My question is, what's the point of law on that? Do we say from the entrance way to the plaza, or from the thoroughfare?
I have to look at what the text says. But in the past, it's consistent with how we've treated other sign bonus requests.
I believe that to be consistent, that you have done, or I've seen them written that way before. But at some point, we should probably go back and double-check that, because in fact, the credit union physical building probably isn't even 100 foot. So it raises the question of how much, I believe that would give us five inches.
Can't even see itself, huh?
Well, you have trees, and, and the whole question comes down to, we may need to change the law at some point. We really should probably take a look at that.
Well, I think Mr. Dupree's looking it up right now.
Mr. Dupree is. And it
I neglected to bring my code.
It says primary access, access.
Right.
So it's, it's consistent with the language. What it was, was when we, when we worked on the code to revise it last time, the sign section, we were talking to the sign fabricators, the two professionals we had, who said that you don't really just want people looking at it from the road. You really want people knowing when they first come into like a strip center, they want to be able to see this way, this way, this way, and then head to it. So that's why we, we made it from the access, the primary access roadway. And it says primary, because we were thinking about in cases such as this shopping center, all our shopping centers, actually, that are big. All three of them have multiple ways to get in. So we were looking at what the primary is, because you don't want to measure from the secondary
Everyone from a
Yeah, so that they could just keep getting bigger sizes. So that's why that's like that.
And by the way, I happened, I did, after I read this this afternoon, I went down to there, and in fact, there's some perfect proportions of the building being
It is. No, it is.
So I mean, I have no problem with it.
Good.
It's just kind of a question of
I'm sorry, I should have asked him, was there any further discussion before?
Oh, no problem.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. And we have a separate resolution now for the freestanding tenant panel. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Pollard, for whipping that out for us.
Resolution recommendation for issuance of sign permits pursuant to Town Code Section 108-24.3A for D, Hyde Park Mall, tenant panel on freestanding sign for Hudson Valley Federal Credit Union. Resolution number 14-57A. Whereas, 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 whereas. Now, now therefore be it resolved, that the planning board hereby recommends that the zoning administrator issue a sign permit for the proposed tenant panel on the existing freestanding sign as shown on the drawings prepared by Timely Signs dated January 7th, 2015.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries. Would you read the Bucix?
No.
Oh, right!
Oh, okay.
Paul sends us regards.
Thank you.
Where did I see that name?
Send the old guy. And I just have an update. I have copies of the letters of authorization and the new drawings.
Perfect. Do you want to, you can just
The five.
For the record, the, this is, the representative is from Timely Signs, and he was offering hard copy letters of authorization from John Azarian, the owner of the site, authorizing them to represent before, to come before the town planning board. It's required under our code that the actual site owner sign off, not just the less E. The last item on the agenda is a discussion, a referral from the town of Asopus on a minor subdivision. I scheduled this on, we had a very brief amount of information that Ms. Knapp sent to us.
They approved, they approved it tonight.
And what-
But you mean an extra-
I came down and took a look, because what concerned me was that the applicants initially for the subdivision were not showing a house lot, and it seemed as though the Asopus Town Planning Board was not bothering to say, "We'll show us where the lot's going to, the house is going to be." After I read through the entire file, as I told Ms. Dexter next to me, one of the most interesting things was that in it, there was a notice of violation to remedy, and it said they needed to cease using the spot for a nude model photography studio.
Yeah.
But the nude modeling, nude model photography seemed to lapse. Good night, Ms. Pollard, safe drive back. Oh, and by the way, for the record, congratulations, I'm not sure the rest of the board knows, but you just made partner.
Congratulations.
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 At any rate, the, the, in the most recent maps that we received, the house that's proposed, that was mentioned in the minutes as being right along the shoreline, has been pulled well back. And out of a construction area, there's now shown minimal impact, so I'm not really sure that we, there's much for us to comment on, other than I'd like to write a letter basically just praising the, the planning board for taking the hard look to say, "We need to know where the house is." And, because if you read all the minutes, the applicants brought an attorney finally, or lawyered up, as we say, and the attorney was accusing them of going too far, being too demanding, and they held their guns, and I think it's a better project now as a consequence. So-